This is the City Council Workshop Meeting, March 8th, 2018, 7:00.
Ready?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order of Budget Workshop in the City of Satellite Beach, March 8th, 2018, overview on revenues and expenditures.
So, thank you for, excuse me, for putting up my phone vibrating right now. We want to bring you all together to talk about two major problems that we are facing in the future, and one is in our general fund, and the other is pressures in the capital assets fund. And one has to, with the general fund, has to do with, a lot has to do with state law changes and state legislation changes. And then the capital assets fund, a lot of that has to do with years of deferred maintenance, and we have a lot of facilities for the amount of people that we have here. So, we're going to go over both of those with you tonight. We're going to start off with a video from the League of Cities that describes the homestead exemption that's going to be on the ballot for November 2018, and this kind of gives you an overview of what the problems are with that amendment from the perspective of the homeowner, the voter. We would like your opinion on this video, because we would like to start pushing that out to the community closer to the time of the election if possible.
Should Florida's tax system work for every homeowner, or just a few? Picking winners and losers simply isn't fair, and that's the problem with Amendment 1. Amendment 1 is a tax code, it's a tax shift. Most of the benefits go to a handful of homeowners, while most of the burden goes to the rest of us. Here's what Amendment 1's tax shift does. A handful of homeowners pay less. To make up the difference, the rest of us pay more. For most communities, Amendment 1 beats a bigger share of the tax burden. Fewer local services, or higher local property taxes. Basically, Amendment 1 gives these warriors a break, while the rest of us grow harder. Amendment 1 doesn't face Florida's tax scheme. It makes it worse, more complicated, and less fair. Amendment 1, some win, most lose.
I love it.
Love it?
Yeah. No, the only thing I will say is that, just watching it topically, a person's going to say, but I might be one of those that gets the decrease. It just doesn't give, it doesn't give, to me, it doesn't give enough depth on how does this impact me? It's a nice presentation, but it just doesn't.
Okay.
It's like flipping a coin, well, I might be the one that gets the, I'm voting for it, so.
Yeah.
It just doesn't go deep enough for me.
Maybe we could put an explanation out there.
How does this impact our voters, our residents, that kind of thing?
I was just going to say, you know, I think that the tax shift is probably the better message. Because even though those people would get a break from that, if municipalities and stuff have to up the property tax as they said, then they really didn't, they didn't really accomplish anything. Sure, they'll get the $25,000 benefit, but their property taxes, as a whole, for everybody, like when you do the millage rate, goes up for everybody, even those who may get more of a benefit in the break, but still, the taxes are still going to go up somewhere.
Well, it's a home rule issue, really, because they're trying to pull more home rule away from each municipality, so think about this.
I agree.
They lower the taxes, we have to make up for that X percent on our end, so we do it. Who looks bad?
Absolutely.
Their message is, look at your municipalities, they raise your taxes, all we're doing up here is cutting your taxes, when really not, they've just caused the burden to shift into us.
That's why I said it is, don't worry about a shift.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, if, I'm all for it, if we want to take the lead on this. I mean, we've got the President of the Space Coast League of Cities here that could push this as the lead through the whole thing, could make it bigger than just Satellite Beach. I just think if we're going to go to battle on this, we ought to really go to battle on it, and have people really stop and say, yeah, I want to read this and understand it. I mean, some people would probably, I don't know, it just depends on where, Dom, if he wants to take this and run forward with it or not, Dom, I don't know.
I think this is, you know, this is something that we're going to probably talk about Monday night. You know, this, to me, if the cities are promoting this to their residents, it's a pretty good message to the residents of our cities that are saying, this is broken, you really need to look at this. So whether or not you're saying I might be one of the small percentage that's getting it, it's putting me on notice that my city's concerned with this happening, and this could be detrimental to my city or to me, because I may be paying more. I'm going to look at it from the opposite end and say, I'm probably going to be one of the ones paying more. So, I think, you know, based on, is this something that we were looking at presenting to the Space Coast League of Cities?
I mean, we can.
I think it's a good idea, I mean. Has the League, I mean, obviously, this is just not a Satellite Beach, this is not a big thing.
Correct.
So, has the League taken any step on it yet?
Not our Space Coast League.
I mean, our Space Coast.
The Florida League has, and many of our Space Coast League members also understand the dynamics as detrimental. So, I think if we went in with this message that says, we're going to do this in our city, are you interested in doing this also?
Because this was developed by the Florida League of Cities.
Okay.
So, this is what their message is going to be on television and so on as time moves closer.
And I think, too, from, earmarked from the League's end, we really, you'd really need to put this together. I mean, this needs to be a special group, it needs to be put together to fight, you know, to fight this. I don't think we can do it at Satellite Beach alone. I think harbor, everybody has to really get on board to put that message out. So, I think the cities need to be on board.
Okay.
This is too big of an issue. That's a state issue.
Do you want to bring a laptop where we can watch this thing Monday night? Because we can bring it up under new business.
Sure.
I mean, all I want to add to this, Dom, is that the assumption I had since this started was, we all know it's going to pass. I mean, that's, we all know it's going to pass, that's what I hear over and over and over again. But, so my point is, is you've got a big, big rock to push up the hill, and it's going to take a lot of work, and it can't just be you. But, I mean, I think you can, in that position, if you can get this moving, I think it'd be a great thing, but.
The Treasure Coast League would probably join in on it, too, because it affects them. You know, it's got to pass with 60% of the vote.
Okay.
So, I mean, there's a very good chance with the League doing, I mean, I was surprised, this is news to me, that I didn't even know the League had had this video. So, I think with them being in the League, it's going to be a statewide issue. They're going to be advocating, you know, to defeat Amendment 1.
They partnered with the League of Counties to do this, too.
I'd rather hear.
You don't need 41.
I'd rather hear it said, look what Brevard County, look what Space Coast League of Cities did, and how hard they worked at doing this. Maybe as other leagues around the state do the same thing, take the model, let you develop, is what I'm saying. That's kind of where I'm going. It's got to be bigger than.
Well, I'll see, on the 21st one, we have our next council meeting, and I'm not here, the State League of Cities Board meets that weekend also. So, I will see people from the state.
They'll champion it. Champion it at that one, if you can. I mean, if you're up to it, that's what, you know.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we'll go into our city budget. So, the current budget environment is that we have, we're grappling with pension state changes on the state level with, to pension legislation that basically increased substantially for at least the next two years, the city's pension contributions by over $200,000, more than what we would normally put in the, in a pension increase. We also had Matthew and Irma in the same fiscal year, so that affected our reserves significantly. We have received some small payments from Matthew, but the majority of that we have yet to see. In Irma, we just quit asking for it. Actually, we didn't quit, but feel it, it feels like you want to quit, because it's just, it's just taking too long. So, the reserves are in a decline because of the fact that we're just not getting FEMA payments quick enough. We also have a homestead exemption, like we just talked about. The impact of that will likely be about $600,000 to the general fund reserve. And again, that only affects assessed property values greater than $100,000 and up to $125,000. We have rising healthcare costs, which occur every year, rising construction costs, which are affecting our capital assets budget, and then until recent years, we've had a deferred maintenance issue across the city, so we're having to grapple with that catch-up still, even after about five years, so.
Can we comment on that? My big fear here is the natural disaster unknown, because it's getting so big now in dollars, and it's taken FEMA so long to get the money back to us. So, how, when you're looking at, I mean, basically, we have a pretty small budget as a town budget goes, when we're owed this type of money for that length of time, and we've got another hurricane season coming up in five months, you know, how much do we sock aside in maybe a different account? That's nothing but for those type of events, because they're all going to be, we haven't even had a hurricane. I mean, the last one wasn't a hurricane here, and we spent $300,000, and we haven't got it back.
Yeah, we're, well, we're going to talk to you about that.
Okay.
Whoops, sorry. Okay. So, our general fund projections that we've used, so you have here in your sheet, the sheet, we're starting to do kind of like a five-year outlook, financial outlook, and in that, those assumptions, we anticipate a 5% increase each year in ad valorem revenue. And that is based on a history there, between a 5 to 6, or 6.5% increase in valuations. So, that's where you see those numbers come from. So, we used a 5%. We anticipate new construction estimates, and you see, we have for fiscal year 18, $30,000 increase in taxes for Montecito Town Homes and Purely Organic Salon on the corner of Jackson in A1A. And then, in fiscal year 1920, we have a $290,000 estimate, and that is the addition of the Oceana Building, the first one. And then also, in fiscal year '20 and '21, we have another estimate for that, which is the addition of Oceana North, okay? We're recommending to you some minor increases to recreation fees, and we're going to go through that. We also anticipated the selling of the Peg Legged Property. You see that 325, that's not the sales price, it is a CRA property, so that's the revenue we would get from that property, the rest would go to the county. And then also, an increase in Waste Management franchise fee, we're recommending, that would be a $50,000 increase, and that would be a franchise fee from 10% to 15%. And just as a side note, 15% is pretty much the normal going rate franchise fees. In general fund, we have to be concerned, we have to be conservative with the general fund, because at every moment, or every year during session, there's always some bills or some legislation that's developed that will affect the city's revenues, whether it's the communication services tax, or business tax receipts, or some thing that they are looking at, because in their minds, they're cutting taxes, but it's a budget that we have to deal with, not them. So, it's easier for them to cut our taxes than it is for them to cut their own taxes. We have increased exemptions for widows coming up, up the, in the future, partial totality exemption for parents of fallen veterans, local business tax exemptions for veterans, certain spouses of veterans, certain low-income members, members of low-income demographic, and then owner of a company is exempt in 25 people or less. So, you know, these are all things that we have to, we're anticipating to affect our general fund revenue at some point. In looking at increasing revenues, the waste management rates, we wanted to briefly describe this, this would come back to you in an agenda item, but you can see with the CPI rate increase that they, that occurs every year with waste management per the contract, the increase would be about 56% or 56 cents for a residential monthly charge. If we were to increase the franchise fee, the increase monthly would be $1.25. So, it'd be about $15 a year. It would affect every resident about $15 a year. So, that's kind of what we, when we look at fees or any type of revenue increase like that, those are the effects, you know? So, when we're looking at a revenue. To give you an idea of what our general fund balance has been, right now, we're at a $545,000 general fund balance. Just last year, we were at 1.2. Back in, when we went through the election, when we first started about five years ago, some of you were here, we started out with $234,000, and as you recall, about 180 of that was restricted reserves. So, we've done a good job building the reserves, and we need to create another strategy to rebuild the reserve after the hurricane.
I have a question. On the general fund, $545,000, what do we supposedly do back from FEMA that would, that would boost that figure, right? Whatever we have supposedly coming back, that's the figure it would boost?
Yeah.
And what are we anticipating they owe us? Not that we're going to get it, but what are we anticipating is there?
So, basically, I check weekly on the set of these things. They will not give you a commitment. It's been, you know, dribbling in over time, so within the past about three weeks, two of our major projects that are in the system for the debris cleanup from Matthew finally got released from the federal level. So, the federal funds are obligated, state funds were obligated sometime before that. So, now we're waiting, because it has to go through, you know, like another five or six levels of, you know, this person pressing a button and saying, yeah, it's okay. But they will not give you a timeframe, and I can't give you one.
No, I'm looking for a dollar figure. I'm not looking for a timeframe.
So far, for Matthew, we've received 80, about $100,000. We're doing another almost $200,000 that's still pending out there, just for Matthew.
Okay.
You know, Irma is about $300,000 as well, so.
So, about $500,000.
So, we've got a half a million.
Easily, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
So, we're really not that far off, because we use the rest of that funds on the property, so we're, and again, that was back to what I said before. I think there needs to be, yes, strategy to build it, but I think it's strategy to build this other fund that maybe it's a disaster fund and so forth, because I have a feeling we're going to, percentage-wise, get more of these, and if we have to wait three years, four years, that's a lot of time for a budget that's this small.
Right. And that, that's the recommendation of the auditors, was, right now, we have a stabilization fund, and depending on what you decide to do with this coming budget and the millage rate and so on, that would depend on how we would structure the reserves account. So, so we'll go through that with you.
And when, and just one more, real quick. If we did, and I kind of agree with Frank, if we did something like a hurricane fund, and we put X number of dollars in there, from an auditor's standpoint, the things that we would be using this money for, whether it's in one fund or the other, they should be able to be combined as a, this is what you have for emergencies, but one is specifically earmarked for hurricanes.
Well, we have that now. We have that now. We have a stabilization fund that can only be used in natural disasters unless you tell us otherwise.
Okay, and that's where that money that we use for those storms came out of?
Well, that's what this is. We used our, we just used our unrestricted reserves, so.
Okay.
You know, we took that down.
So, the unrestricted reserves are.
So, that is the total fund balance.
I have a quick question. So, most of our expenses during a hurricane are for debris removal. Are we doing anything about trying to negotiate some contracts so that we are, that's included in whatever fees we're paying, so we're not paying out of pocket for debris removal? Or moving forward in the future, are we just anticipating that we are just going to have public works, which does an amazing job, of course?
That's not what the cost really was.
It wasn't for the, okay.
It was contractual.
Other contractors that came in.
So, so in debris removal, because you can't, waste management doesn't do debris removal, because they, that's just not their value-ic, I guess. Debris removal companies are a total different animal. And so, when, we, we have been in the county's contract, so it was inter-local agreement among numerous cities, and the county did a countywide debris removal bid, a contractor grossly underbid to get the bid, well, the problem with that was when they were out cleaning up, their subs weren't being paid enough, because there were storms everywhere else, so they were just walking off the job. That's why it took so long. So, we got tired of that, and we ended up hiring our own, and they were local debris removal people, but we ended up having to pay for that.
There's another N to this figure, okay? We're talking debris removal, but police and fire, public works.
All the personnel costs, right?
Right, that's still an overtime, an over-figure.
Right.
Out of our budget for storms.
Correct.
So, that's kind of partly what I'm saying, is, you know, maybe there's this fund over here that takes.
Right, so, this is the auditor's opinion, is you're, we're normally required to have about 1.2 to 1.4 million in reserves, correct? And they're saying, because if we use half of that in a dual hurricane again, we're getting a declining financial position, and let's say if we get another hurricane next year, we're not there yet, you know? So, we're draining our reserves to the point where, if we get another hurricane now and spend another $300,000, we will have cash flow problems, okay?
And I think, yes.
So, what I'm saying is, their recommendation is, you have the $1.2 million in reserves, and you have a $600,000 hurricane fund sitting out to the side.
Amen. I mean, yes, and I think that's.
So, we're going to show you how that strategy is.
Perfect.
So.
Because we haven't had a hurricane. And my fear is, 300's the lower end of this deal? If we ever have a hurricane?
A big one?
A big one, yeah.
Right, yeah. The debris was easy, actually.
Yeah.
I mean, well, not for hell. So, this is just to give you an idea of, you know, just a general fund expenditure history. All of this information is in your packet, but we just raised it differently here, so you could see the difference in expenditures for like, for salaries. So, you see back in 2010, it's kind of hard to see on the screen, at least for me, I might have bad eyes, but from 2010 to 2011, you'll see that salaries are going down, and that's because there's a, there's no raises being given at that point, we're cutting staff and hours. And then you see, when you start in 2013, you start seeing the increase, or in 2014, you see the increase, and that's the salary raises we're being given again. You see in later years, for 2016 and 2017, this is when you see positions start being added, so, you know, so that's why those changes are happening. And you'll see the other changes in, operating funds have been very stable, we very rarely increase operating funds, and if they are increasing, it's usually in public works because of cost for equipment and things like that increase.
On the salary end, was part of the 1617, was that part of the compression stuff we did, too?
Yes. So, compression, and then we added a position in City Hall, and then we added a position in public works.
Okay. On, oh, go back there, that one there, general, on pensions. We're, we're looking at, you know, 2017, police and fire, $870,000. The numbers that I heard at the meeting are probably $180,000 to $200,000, is that what we're looking at going, that's in addition to the 870 that's already there?
So, we're going to go through that, too.
Okay.
So, here's a position count. So, back in 2009, the city had 93 full-time positions, the remaining, so totally, we, total, we had 107 positions. Out of that 93 of them were full-time positions. And you can see that go down during the recession, and then they started creeping back up. Now, we have 86 positions. From the time that I was hired in 2014 to now, we have increased one position in City Hall after decreasing several, we took several out. Most of all the other positions, actually, all the other positions, aside from part-time positions, have been in public work. So, you can see, the reason why we're showing this is that we've been very, it's hard to get a position out of us.
Some people have said that.
Probably public safety. And here's the salary changes. This is where we're, you can see, again, where the hiring happened, the compression raises were happening, and those are in the later years. After compression's over and we don't have any positions being added that year, the normal increase in salary costs, or personnel costs, is about 3% to 4%. Health insurance changes, we started switching over to the partially self-insured plan in the clinic, and so these rises are primarily the capital costs for the clinic and the startup of the partially self-insured policy or setup, I guess you could call it. So, we are waiting to get the numbers back, to see how well the clinic is going to impact our plan. And then if it's not impacting as well as we want it to, then we make adjustments to the plan. So, that might be forthcoming. These are the changes in operating expenses. And, again, they're just, they hold very constant, and I think, what is the 12%?
Hurricane.
Hurricane, that's right. So, you can see how that operated, that impacted overtime.
So, that, that would be like overtime costs?
Yeah.
You know?
That would have been in your salary. The operating is more of where we come into play with the, the debris cleanup and replacing things that we can make it with, goes into that operating cost.
This is the issue that we're grappling with now, with this, with the pension for police and fire. For the next two years, the cost increases are going to be pretty large, but other than that, when there's a, when there's a good economy, the cost increases aren't, aren't, are pretty normal. You see the cost increases happen when the state fiddles with the regulations, or when the investments are down in the recession. This is the general employee pension changes. You don't see a lot of changes with this, because there's just not many people left in that plan. So, there's not a lot of people contributing to it, and there's not a lot of people on it now, as retirees. So, in our cost estimates that you see on your, in your, your front sheet there, every year, we have, we have a, we have your current millage rate, and when we get the property valuations in, we usually have that 5% increase that we usually, we base our averages on. And that brings in a certain value. And from that value, we start deducting all of our cost increases out of that. And here's the cost increases that, that we have. So, we have the 2% COLA at $109,000, 5% health insurance increase at $61,000. We have a 2% contingency, and that's what we estimate for any operating expense increases, at $50,000. We have the 401A cost for the employee contributions, or for the general employees, police and fire pension costs at $157 this coming year, and then general employee pension increases at $31,000. So, you can see, if we, we get $313,000 in additional ad valorem revenue, and that's what we're estimating now, and that can change based on what the actual ad valorem estimates are going to be from the property appraiser. But this is generally what they always are. We take out the COLA for the, for the employees, health contingency, and the 401A, and that's about $223,000. We take out the general employee pension this year, which leaves us with a $100,000 gap. And normally, we have leftover, anywhere between a 50 to $80,000 gap that we usually try to close. That's, that is hard. It's better when the gaps are like 20 or 40. But, in this case, the gap is 100, here. So, that's your general fund issues, and we're going to talk about the later years in a minute, but I want to give you the problems that we're encountering with aging infrastructure. And, so, if you look at this, this is pictures of our public works, one of their buildings that's by the police station, that, and some of the police, the police use some of this building, too, for record storage and other storage. But you can. But you can see what it looks like inside. We get complaints from the neighbors about rats getting into that building. And when we look at replacing that building on the site itself, which obviously would be preferable because it's cheaper and it's already, you know, the neighbors are used to it and so on. The problem is, is that area is in a very bad elevation area. When you're trying to make a 100-year investment and you know that it's flooding in major events any now, and you just look at the future elevation problems that we're going to have with flooding, it's questionable whether we want to spend that much money on a facility that's, we're going to have to move in 30 years. Okay? Similar to the idea of moving the fire station. So we were trying to decide, you know, what do we do about that? We have two areas that we need to move and two buildings that we need to invest in. The fire station's another one because it is too small for them. And it's woefully inadequate, especially from an administrative staffing standpoint, from their office standpoint. So we actually considered doing, we went through all this with the fire station and we decided to move it and we purchased that property. And now we thought, you know, what if we go ahead and put public works on that property as well? Because it could fit, it's big enough to hold both facilities. Instead of budget for that and put it in phases, put it in a phase. Clearly, the condition of public works would warrant that move first because of their, their condition. We would obviously have to finance that. A water utility tax would be a way to do that so you don't have to take out general fund debt and go to referendum for that. You also have the opportunity to sell the former public works property and plat that into three single-family lots along with the Cinnamon's hot lot. And move the Cinnamon's hot lot into the playground area next to the baseball field and combine those two playgrounds. Because quite frankly, you have two playgrounds within 50 feet of each other and it might be better to have one playground. And this is part of our ideas of trying to narrow or shrink some of these facilities and combine them because of the amount that we have. Because we do have a lot of facilities for the, the location that we're, you know, the smaller city and then also with the tax revenue that we're getting is not enough to keep up with the facilities that we have. We think that if we sell this, these lots, that we could, we could get a good amount of money for those at some point to replenish what we're spending. This is all Brittany's PowerPoint and stuff. So we also have to consider the capital asset fund debt. And you have in your sheet, if you go to your, your... It's right after CRA, so go past stormwater and then to the capital assets fund. You'll see that if we were to increase the utility tax, we would, we could receive about $200,000 more. We don't tax water now, so that's something we could put a tax on. If we don't do that, we won't be able to build these facilities. So we're just trying to give you the option of how we would, we would do that. Right now, we receive about 100, $780,000 in revenue from the capital assets fund. I would say the one unfortunate thing about the capital assets fund is the revenues don't, they don't keep up with the construction cost increases. So the increase in revenue on your utility taxes don't rise in the same manner that construction costs do. So we have a $780,000 revenue. Right now, we have a $370,000 debt service. Next year, we'll have a $491,000 debt service and that's largely because of the property purchase of Jackson. That goes down in 2020 because you see fire trucks starting to come off that, some other debt service responsibilities that we have. And at that point, we would, you'll see that in the capital assets fund, even if we go through a utility tax increase with an increasing revenue source, that increased revenue source will have to be dedicated towards debt service for new buildings. That still is not bringing enough money in after debt service to address the maintenance needs of the city. So, and the, and the issue that we have with the debt is that we've had, unfortunately, when we started in 2014, we had to replace two fire trucks in a short, a short timeframe. We had to do Roosevelt, we had to do street repaving, we had to catch up on that. We had to, we had to do a lot of, a lot of emergency AC replacements. We have replaced the dance floors at the Schecter Center. So pretty large ticket items, escape park. So all of these things, we've been able to accomplish, but we're still not able to keep up with the facilities that we have. So in the entire scenario, we're going to show you some options. And you can have, there's, there's ways to address the shortfalls. We can raise revenue through a multitude of ways. We can defer capital projects, we can defer maintenance, we can cut services, we can reduce employee benefits and we can eliminate city facilities or a combination there. So those are pretty much the options and it's just how we do it or what we, what we want to do. I think you'll see in our options that the staff presents to you, one of the things that we would prefer and are strongly recommending against is to put any of this issue on the backs of the employees. Because largely this $25,000 homestead exemption is not, was not done because there's a recession. It was not done to address people crying about, crying out about increased taxes. This was done for a political issue from somebody in Tallahassee wanting to get elected. And so for our employees to have to suffer that, we would strongly recommend against that. So we're providing three options to you. Option one would be to keep the millage rate the same. Do not increase any fees. Do not increase or do not complete any projects and we would not be able to put any money in reserves. And this would be for the, obviously for the next year. If you look at your written presentation, you'll see some notes that we put in there to help you. Did it print out? If you go to your presentation, page 19, you'll see that basically this option would include no maintenance or projects in the capital assets fund and will not build reserves until the city addresses the millage rate. So you could defer doing any of that this coming year, that's certainly an option. That would include, you could include not doing the canal dredging that we were going to bring to you coming up in your next meeting. This would include, basically the canal dredging would be the preliminary engineering design to tag on to the county's dredging project that they're permitting this year. So the downside of not doing that is we would end up having to do that on our own later, which would be much more expensive. The, you know, obviously the upside would be, we'd get it done. But the, the other downside, if we did do it, is the impact to the, to our finances. It is $130,000 estimate.
What are they actually, don't you know what they're actually doing? The whole Grand Canal, is that what they're doing?
Yeah.
They're not doing any interior canals, just the Grand Canal.
Well, they're doing their interior canals in the county area.
So us partnering with them, $130,000 that we're spending is our interior canals?
For preliminary engineering design.
That's not, that's not the...
That's just permitting, permitting and engineering, yeah. The actual construction, I have a meeting with Virginia Barker on Monday along with Indian Harbor Beach and Cocoa Beach to talk to them about how they're going to pay for it through the legal tax.
So we paid for the engineering guys to do it, but the county is going to pay for the actual...
That's the desire, yeah. And if we, if they, if that meeting on Monday doesn't come out well, we will withdraw that, you know?
And are we being, it seems as of late because of the cost of everything being so much more expensive, where we're estimating this $130,000, are we being realistic with that estimation? Or are we going to cut back like with another 50,000 or 60,000?
That's, that's the engineering and that engineering scope has already been sent to us, like in contract form. So that, that is definitely as secured as the...
So on this, you say option one is to nothing, nothing's never any good in the process of time. But, you know, what are the critical things that if we leave behind for a year or two, that it's going to cost us way more three or four years from now? Because I know there's probably a couple of things here that are goodies.
I'm going to show you.
That we would like to have. So what are those things that we really need to do?
I'm going to show you in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay, ready? So option two would be, you have, you have kind of two options and options two. In fiscal year 1819, you could cancel all the rest of the CRA projects. And that would mean that the second phase of the Civic Center would not get done as well as the landscaping for the medians on A1A and Jackson Avenue, Stormwater, okay? However, you would be able to substantially increase your reserve account at that, without doing that at all. So that would be the upside. The downside is that you would be giving away basically 35% of the CRA money back to the county, never to be given back. The other downside would be that we would be deferring maintenance again in the Civic Center. We'd be not finishing A1A, which I think would be pretty bad. And then not completing our Stormwater project on Jackson and along Jackson, which is something that we need to do for our water quality. So what I'm trying to say is, yes, we would be able to do all this, but the cons of that are, will hurt us down the road, in my opinion. So that's one. Now you could keep all the CRA projects in this option. And if you did that, this final net position that you see here would, would hold true, okay? You'd still put $100,000 in reserves, okay? Right? No, okay. And the, now the downside of that is in the capital assets fund, we have nothing. After debt service and after paying for electric, like, technology contracts, we have ongoing technology contracts for the cloud-based email system and so on. After paying off that and the RMS system and so on, we would not be able to do car replacement programs, which is devastating to staff because we know the minute we stop doing that, we're going to pay for it later. We know that. In our, in our opinion, the vehicle replacement program to get off that path again is very expensive. Remember our first budget together, we bought five police cars in one year. Right, five? Yeah. So that's option two. Not very exciting either, in my opinion.
Do you want us to save our questions to the end?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
So the Civic Center here, just for conversation, we're, we're going to do the plumbing, right?
Yes, that's actually already funded.
That's funded, that's there.
Right.
So to me, if I had to cut corners and condense things for a year or two, that's not perfect. But compared to cars, Jackson, Stormwater and some of those things, I look at that as more of a benny than it is something that is, you know, hardcore that we, we got to do. Here and there, we don't do the cars in the order, we don't do streets. We know it comes back to bite us because we didn't do paving for how many years, eight years or whatever? And then you have a tremendous expense. Yes, I'd like to see the Civic Center renovated, but if I'm stuck in this position, Jackson, Stormwater is important because of the lagoon and those other issues to me are more important than the Civic Center. Because we've got other areas, it's not perfect. But that's how I would go, personally go through here and say, what are those things we don't want to fall really behind? And maybe the Civic Center is on the next year issue instead of now.
I'd like to add to that too, is we know right now we are in an extremely high construction cost situation and that's unsustainable as well. And I would foresee that construction costs will eventually go down again. I see some of my friends that own construction companies are already vamping up... Thanks, Larry. I, I foresee the potential of the construction cost possibly going down. In which case, the loss that we're going to take from that, you know, the contribution from the county, we may be able to offset a little bit by not having to pay so much more money than like, for example, two years ago. So I'm, you already know what I think about the Civic Center. I kind of voiced my opinion with the last budget for that. But I think the A1A medians we have to do because that's every person that drives through our city sees that. And if they look the way they look right now, that, that's just not okay at all personally, sort of that.
I got a couple of things. When you, when you talk plumbing, we're talking about fixing the bathrooms and making them AD, okay? The other thing I'm looking at is if we don't do the Civic Center, some of that money is CRA money.
That is, that is CRA money.
And if we don't do it and use those funds for that, do we bank the, the money or do we have to give the county the money?
You have to give the county the money.
Okay, now, if we do the Jackson Ave project, that's in the CRA. Can we utilize the money that was going back to the county and instead of giving it to the county, push it over to the Jackson project because it's in the CRA?
Yeah, I don't think you need all that money for the Jackson project.
Well, if we're taking money out of the general fund and we can siphon money from CRA, you know, into it, I mean, how much money on the Jackson project is coming out of CRA funds? Is it all CRA?
It'd be CRA for landscaping, you know, sidewalk, bike lane stuff. And the Stormwater Fund would be doing the Stormwater part of it.
Excuse me, sir, we're saying that we started a project, A1A. If we start another project and don't finish one project, I don't think that looks too good. So going back to your thing, if we take some of the CRA money and it goes to Jackson, the other portion of the CRA money goes to A1A and we finish the project. Then the following year, we start on a new project because we finished the other ones.
Yeah. If we, if we don't do the Civic Center and we can not give the money back to the county and use it either on Jackson or, or A1A, I would much rather see us do that and finish those things too. I, I agree.
I just don't want to...
I don't want to give the money back to the county if we don't have to.
And the other thing I don't want to do is...
This is the thing. So the, the dollar amounts that are budgeted in the CRA can be moved around whenever we get bids in or, you know, the dollar amounts we know we're going to spend on it. But, but that doesn't help reserves.
No, I really understand.
The only reason why we were saying that you could cut CRA projects from a financing standpoint is that you could cut them and move, and you give 35% back to the county and 65% goes to the city general fund and you have a reserve strategy there. So that's an option. If, if you don't want, if you want to keep your CRA money in the CRA, then we can talk about that later when you want to re-budget your CRA and figure out how you want to spend that money.
So this, in other words, the CRA money, giving it back is putting money back into reserves? Our share is going to go in the reserve?
If you, if that's something you, if that's an option that you have. And, and that would be part of your...
My big fear is reserves from this long lag period that we have recuperating. quite sizable amount of money to us. And if you had that six hundred or seven hundred thousand right now, and it was in there and it was up, we might have a different conversation here. So my feeling is, I'd like to, we need a buffer in there, and...
So here's three.
Okay. What I hate is how long it took us to get on track with police cars, fire trucks, and all this because we get off cycle on things that are used day in and day out. And we always gonna need those things. They've gotta stay there.
Well, that's, that's the, you know, that's the thing is, you know, we've had, we've replaced flooring in the rec center. We've replaced flooring. Where else? Police, the police department. These are things that, you know, may not sound like you have to do them, but you do. When there's water leaks, they start, the flooring starts to come up. You know, this is all stuff that we have to do. So facility improvements may not sound like they need to be done, but yes, they need to be done. You need to do improvements to your facilities. You have to update them regardless of what, it may sound like a want in some ways. But you can update facilities at a way lesser amount and a lesser cost, but you still need to update. This option three includes a reserve build strategy that would basically give us the hundred thousand, like the last option, but would also give us a net position of two hundred thousand, which we would shift into capital assets to allow us to continue our maintenance program. And as you can see, that would provide us next year with only a thirty thousand dollar gap to close. The year after that, we would be...
We fall back then. After that, we fall back again, a hundred and seventy.
Right. And that would all go into capital assets. Because the, the problem is, is our capital assets fund, the revenue going in there is not enough to deal with what we have to deal with. So there has to be some revenue strategy that goes into that fund, that goes beyond the current revenue source.
Can I tell you what the percent that it would take each year to keep it neutral?
Keep what neutral?
That cost is the fund neutral. To keep, the, the cost of doing the maintenance and everything neutral. You said you don't have the funds to do that. What is that percent that to keep those funds?
That to keep the, the revenues equal to the expenditures?
Yeah. How, you know, where do you keep that neutral point at? Because you know you're gonna have to replace.
That's, well, that's the difference.
Cars, infrastructure, all the time.
Because right now, we're playing catch-up still. So like, I mean, we have to build two new facilities in a different location. That, that's a big deal. So, you know, when, we didn't have that before. You know, every, every year, we find out more about climate change. And every year, we find out more about, you know, new construction costs. And so that, that's a difficult question to answer. We can, we can answer it probably for the next three years. But I think that's what we're trying to do here.
The way I look at the new buildings, let's just forget the buildings for a second. Because hopefully, when you build them, they're new, yes, they, they have a cost. But just take that away and say, here we are, we haven't done those buildings yet. Our slope's doing this. We're not gaining on this because we don't have the funds to do it. So what are those funds to need? Forget your buildings just for a second, to maintain what we have day in, day out, to maintain his police cars, to maintain the fire trucks, to...
Go to your capital assets.
Okay.
We call it wish list, but that's really what all the capital cost that the departments send in. The total projects for that, for the five years, right, it's five years, is four million dollars.
So it's seven hundred and fifty thousand year, eight hundred thousand year, if you just brought it. That's the negative?
And then, and that's, you know, still, department heads, that I'm still trying to eke out of them what they really need because they, they're hesitant to submit things. They do that quite a bit. They're hesitant to ask for things because they know we don't have the funds. So that's, that's probably a very low estimate of what they actually need.
You know, one of the, one of the things with the, I'll just call them the Ramona condos, is we knew that those increments of money would come in once those two things were built, and your, your numbers reflect that. One of the easiest ways out of this, Courtney, from what I see, is to have something grow. Is there any strategy, market, I'll just use the word marketing or development or whatever that we could do with this property that's up here, to really accelerate that? Because that's, that property was kind of, in my mind, not completely, but a trade-off for the forty percent. And it's not going anywhere. I mean, is there, am I, so I, I don't necessarily expect an answer out of this, but are, are there any incentives we could offer to anybody coming in here that could say, yeah, man, we'll build?
That's, that's a great question because that's exactly what our climate ambassador team is putting together, is a strategy. Because one of the things our development community here, we don't really have a development community. We have the property owners that are wanting, buying up property and wanting to redo it. One of the problems I'm running into is the mixed-use density that we allow isn't enough for them to justify the cost of the project. And the height of the buildings aren't enough to get a good mixed-use project in, so they don't do it. So what they end up doing is just renovating the buildings. They don't comply with new stormwater laws. They don't comply with new parking laws and so on. So our climate ambassadors are coming up with what that changes, what those changes would need to look like to promote growth. In a good way. So in, in a, a way that's reminiscent of our, character of our community. And the other is, we do have the twenty-seven acre property that's...
I was just gonna ask you, do we have an estimate of...
Well, they come in, they, they've met with us on a development proposal. We've given them our comments, and they're gonna come back with us, to us with some changes they're gonna need to decode. And those are some of the things that we need to keep an open mind on. You know, none of the changes, they're actually building a lot less density than they're allowed to build. But they, they need some flexibility on setbacks and things like that. And I think that's some of the things we need to keep an open mind on when we, when we see that proposal.
It's five years away. Four years away.
It usually takes about a year to engineer and plot a project of that size. And then they, you know, it's a, those, nobody walks in with that amount of money. So they have to come up with, they have to put all that together. And, and that, after that, they will start building, and that takes, you know, time.
Right. So I'm saying, by the time we can count on that in the budget...
I'm sure it'll dribble in, though. I mean, yeah, it'll phase it in.
Shuttle ready in fourteen months, and one of the, because of our processes.
Okay. But still, the money coming to us is gonna be...
That's three years away, at least.
That's what, that's my point is, we can look at it as making up a deficit. But right now, between now and that time...
The other thing is, you cannot plan financially on new construction. Because I have seen projects like the twenty-seven acres planned seven times before they build it, at least. So until they build, they pull a building permit and actually start constructing and CO, do we not ever count on that new construction? Because, I mean, John will tell you, see, during, especially during the recession, that was a big wake-up call to a lot of local governments, counting on new construction.
Just look at the Patsy property. Look at how long it took for that to come to fruition. Because we all thought when we traded properties, it was gonna happen immediately, and the...
Well, he could probably CO one in July, but he'll do it in August so he can avoid those years, the next year tax.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we traded properties years ago. So, I mean, it took that long for the economy to come back, for him to even start thinking about building something.
I guess my point with this is, and I get it, Frank, it'll be a while before that money comes in. But if I'm Joe Satellite Beach citizen, I'd like to know that...
Yes.
That, that's, that's in part of this plan that this group of people's coming up with. And it's a big part of, we're looking, we're not, I know we're in a hard spot right now, but in a few years, the sun's gonna start coming up. Because look at what we've got coming down there. I think that would help.
One of the things, too, I think that, you know, and Brittany is the godsend, I have to say. And she just tells you exactly how it is. And one of the things that we have to think about is when we, a lot of times, will lower the millage rate or do what we can in that respect because it's a popular thing to do. And it, and it says something in the community, you're trying to do it. But honestly, if we had kept it that way and pocketed that funds and reserves, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in today. And so when we get to new construction and we start lowering millage rates, we need to make sure that we don't, we don't go past what we need to make sure that we can keep up with the maintenance. The, the, the cost of not maintaining things is so much greater and such a more fiscal, fiscally prop... And it's irresponsible in the future to the next people that have to take over. It really is. And, you know, so we need to make that, make sure we keep that in mind. That, that's a huge problem. When we, when we started out after the recession, having to buy five police cars, two fire trucks, you know, major, major reconstruction of roadways and so on. We don't ever wanna get in that spot again. And we're, we're trying to eke our way out of it. But, you know, Roosevelt could have been a three hundred thousand dollar road, but it was a million and two. So that, that, those costs rack up if we, if we wait too long.
You know, going back to what Mark mentioned earlier, is there anything that we can do incentive-wise for the Hundred Acres?
The Hundred Acres, they have had so many offers on that property. This is the one thing, too, in the city of Satellite Beach. The only thing we need to do for an incentive for good development is be fast. Be fast and have reasonable codes. Because we have a market, and we know we do. We don't have to give incentives. I think we were, we were asked last, yesterday, and I was like, no, we don't, we don't do that. The reason why the Hunt property's not selling is because they don't wanna sell it. They just don't wanna sell it. They have been offered countless of offers. That, the, the dollar amounts will blow your mind, and they, they just don't have any incentive to sell it.
Has anybody ever actually been able to talk to them? Because I know a lot of people just, and they just don't ever even...
We hired a lobbyist specifically to do that.
Courtney and I have met with the general numerous occasions on it. And, you know, we were getting nowhere in the beginning.
I've spoken with them. Interestingly enough, I had a meeting with another round of developers that wanted to go after the Hundred Acres. And I, I meet with them. They, they have great plans for the property. And I never hear from them again because they call Hunt and they don't get anywhere.
You know, the, the, the part of the rationale when we annexed that property was the anticipation of what was going to happen in our city. And, and this is really, it's been a tourniquet around our neck.
Yeah.
At this stage of the game, because none of this is what we anticipated happening.
Yes. That's, that's the other thing, too, is we, you know, when we annexed that property, we were expecting, because it was the base for it to be developed very fast. And, and that's a good example of why you don't count on reconstruction. Because you never know what, what's gonna happen.
If, if we're looking at your final recommendation here, you know, we're anticipating property values to stay where they are also. You know, if something happens in that regard, based on whatever happens in the world economy, where is that gonna put us further?
But that's another, go, if we go back to the fund balance slide. Are you sure?
Let's still get two more things.
If you go back to the, so you see in the fund balance history, if it wasn't for that rev, that fund balance during the recession, the city would have been a lot more hurt in terms of having to lay people off. And, I mean, quite frankly, if, if you compare Satellite Beach's impact to other cities that had to do large-scale, massive changes to the way they do things because of that, we fared very well. And it was because there was a reserve there that we were able to back, to close that gap in the budget-wise every year. So that's what you all did, instead of laying people off and doing, I mean, even though you had to do that in the end, you were able to sustain that for a long time because of that reserve, you know?
And it took us a while to get that money there. From when we came, from when I came on council in two thousand and two, it took us a while to get that up to where it was.
That's why when we see the five twenty-five, and we know we're not gonna get FEMA anytime soon, you can see Brittany doesn't sleep really well now. I wake up in a panic in the middle of the night. Because we know how important that, that, that fund balance is. And it's important to cash flow, too, so...
Marcus, Marcus.
Okay. This addresses the general fund and the, and back to Frank's comment about we really didn't have hurricane, which we really didn't have hurricane. Just as part of the, because I kind of get a feel where we're going with this, but just as part, part of the concept of this, and this would be a perfect John Fergus project, okay? This could keep John in his room for hours. Is if you had some estimate of what a level one, two, three, four type of hurricane would cost?
He could do it.
John would have fun with this.
He could do it.
So, but I mean, you know, Chief Pearson could say, Chief Pearson could say, we didn't have a hurricane. This is what it cost us. So citizens, if we had a level three, we, we...
Really good idea.
That kind of thing. And that might say that that's why this is a priority of this.
That's a good idea to, to present to the Budget Advisory Committee. And I just wanna clarify, too, whilst, you know, clearly, we, we have recommendations that we are very strongly recommending that we do not affect employees with this issue. That's, that's one of the things I'm, I'm hoping to get across to you. Secondly, we do believe that we can, that we really, we do believe it's very important to stay on track with maintenance, and, and that, that's one of the other issues. How we do that, and there's so many other ways to do this, that even though you'll, we're obviously, you'll see staff pushing option three, but we do have the Budget Advisory Committee that we're putting together. And so we're trying to keep our open mind, waiting to see if they have some other suggestions for any of this. And they may, you know, so we want, we wanna make sure that, hey, if they can save us money here or they recommend some other type of fee increase or revenue source that we didn't think of, we're, we're open-minded to that.
I got one more thing. This is kind of minutia, but I'm throwing it out there. You talked about finishing A1A and the medians and all that sort of thing. I don't know whether we can do this or not. That's between you and DOT and all those other folks. But why not have those individual medians sponsored by somebody? I'm just picking on, since we don't have one, Pizza Hut buys a median. Or not buys a median, but takes one over, maintains it, all that sort of thing. And then, I've seen them in other cities. They get a little plaque, this median sponsored by, that sort of thing. It's small chain stuff, I realize, but there's probably some businesses around here that might wanna do some of this. No, it's, it's just small money, but it's, I'm just, again, I'm trying to come up with some, that's kind of a growth thing. It gives you some money. And if they don't pay a particular year, all comes their sign, somebody else sponsors it.
It's a really good idea.
So anyhow, that's all I got.
So I was just wondering, this kind of more towards John's side, and this might, maybe another like little chip away at cost. But what are we seeing as far as taking some of our older houses? And I'm seeing it a little bit more where they're raising the roof and they're building a larger house and increasing the value. Are we seeing any kind of an increase in that? And is there anything code-wise that we could do that would promote people to do that? Because then we have home values increasing, and then therefore, more money coming into our revenues.
Well, I don't know if we have any, we don't have any zoning code obstructions to what you're talking about. I mean, they're purely building codes. For instance, you know, we have thirty-five feet in height.
Right.
And that doesn't really seem to be an issue in the residential area. So therefore, we don't have any zoning obstructions in that way.
Okay.
And the building codes are what they are. You know, it's, they're, they're a minimum standard to which you can build by. So they, they can't be lessened any more than they are. So certainly, we can encourage those kinds of things and try to remove obstacles where they are. But there's not really a lot of obstacles. It's just about people having that liquidity, you know, the equity in their home to where they're reinvesting in their home. And, and we are seeing that. I mean, our permits are going through the roof right now. It really is.
It's because the valuations are, that they're able to refinance and get HELOCs.
They're doing very good on permits and revenue.
Specifically, in storm situations, do we see an increase in permits for people making their houses bigger after a storm, having possibly gotten insurance money? Does that ever flow that way?
It's usually just trying to put the life back together.
Okay.
And, and keep in mind, you know, right after that storm, especially if you're under an emergency order from the governor, you know, we're waiving storm-related permits, so, you know, those revenues... So, you know, those revenues, even though the activity is up, the revenues are down. So we're working hard for less during that period of time.
The cost to the fence, when we waive fence permits, was about $15,000.
Yeah. Fence and roofs.
You know, we talk about how we're going to transition A1A, and we seriously need to look at the building height on the east, on the west side of A1A. Because that's something that can really change the dynamics of the people that own those properties being able to do different things with them, to make them more viable. And at the same time, will boost some of the revenue coming into the city. I mean, I really think that we need to look at how we're going to go about changing the building height on the west side of A1A. Because it's a great selling point to the community right now with all of these things that are going on. We have all of this property that's not being utilized to its fullest extent because we have limitations.
We're doing that right now.
Yeah, your committee stuff coming out of the Climate Advisors speaks exactly to what you're talking about.
So they're actually preparing a question for the ballot?
Okay. Question, other times in budget and budget review, we had a comparison, okay? So I'll say of them a numbers guy, and I just want to see what's the bottom line. So on the average house in Satellite Beach, 8.15 compared to 8.4. Could you do that? Just so we can see, you know, is it $50, is it 100? Where's that difference? I remember in the past, doing that, that gives somebody a relationship to it. Because we could be arguing over $50 here tonight, $80. And I know to other people it's raising, but what is that?
I have looked at Courtney's specifically, because we use that with the budget every year anyways. And hers, on average, it's about a $300 increase.
So that difference between 8.15 and 8.4 is $300?
Is there any way that we can step this slowly? Like, instead of going straight to 8.4, could we just do little dips, like here and here and here?
But that bit has to be greater than the inflation and what it's costing you the next year, or you're still sliding down the backside of the hill.
Like this, instead of this, and then people aren't getting hit with a big...
The only reason I say that on that percent is I think that's what people are going to relate to. It's $300. Whoa, that's a hit for a lot of people. You say it's $50 a person, much different.
I mean, that's not just the Satellite Beach portion, that's what your whole thing would look like with Revard County.
Revard County, school buildings, the whole. Yeah. It's not just our portion. Yeah, but if we go up on our mileage, it's only our portion, right?
Right, what is our portion increase?
It would be, yeah, but I'm just saying with hers, I would have evaluated on all the way across, you know what I mean? Like, I would have included all the millage rates that you paid on the property taxes, but just increasing our millage and leaving all the other millages alone?
It's 300 bucks?
So you're, okay. So just that increases, that seems like, that seems like a lot, just from past...
And it's been a while since I've looked at it, so let me double check and make sure...
Designer's trying to double check that.
Just the Satellite Beach portion of the tax, so you can sell it to a citizen that here's what we're getting for the difference, why we need to do that.
So, now that we're on that portion of the subject, let me just play some devil's advocate here and throw some things out. Any tax increase we do, a citizen sees that as a pay cut. That's money you're taking out of my pocket. So I'm taking a pay cut. So the reality situation, and I understand the point that obviously we don't want to put anything on the backs of our city workers, but you got to make sure you're communicating that you're now putting it on the backs of a citizen. At the same time, if we're going to increase, let's just say, waste management. So if you're going to add, or a water fee, if you start adding a water fee and your waste management's going up, and we're doing a millage rate increase, and all these things add up, it's not $300, it's a lot more than that. Now, that being said, and I agree, we don't want to get into things about streets and cars and maintenance. But at some point, if you took a poll of a lot of people, the citizens, and you said, what's in need and what's a real, and a want? From the point you're saying is, and I'll throw out a good example, because we see this now. You say you're going to do something with the canal. Well, the majority of citizens in Satellite Beach don't live on a canal. They don't really care whether you fix the canal, don't fix the canal, or anything else. On the same side is, we hear this with the beach, for example. You know, there's a lot of people, we know those people...
So we're going to make a correction. I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's $16.92.
Much different?
That's my point about the conversation here.
And that's true. And so, my point being, again, as long as we're talking about this, and when you go to sell this and whatever we're doing, again, the needs wants, and I'll throw another one out there. I'd have a hard time saying, "I'm going to raise your taxes because I want to landscape A1A." People are going to tell, and you know how it gets blown, we're going to say, "So what you're saying is you want to raise my taxes so we can plant flowers, right? That's what you're telling me?" That's a hard sell. And I know that's not really what we're saying, but you know how people, that's how people take that. People are going to take that as, you want to plant flowers on A1A, so this is why you're raising my taxes. So I just say, you know, when we talk about this, we have to make sure that maybe we're presenting, because we get into these town halls and stuff like that, we need to explain, which I think you did a very good job, Courtney, of saying, you know, facility maintenance is not a want. You know, we got rat problems, we got water problems, we got people living in hard times in our facility. That is true. And you need to frame that way. And stay away from, I would say, controversial subjects where someone could just, like I said, say, "Well, we want to clean up, we want to do something to the canal." And if you're going to go to all these people that don't live on canals, that's a hard sell.
I have a disagreement on the canal portion, a giant one. Because we are in, environmentally right now, that lagoon is the hottest topic around. You see it in the paper every day. You see maps being put out on the algae blooms where the fish kills are. And I can tell you, I hear more people saying, "When are you cleaning that thing up? We are paying this half-cent sales tax. We made $44 million." So to me, the environment is in people, you can win an environmental issue right now on the lagoon, and that's what they're trying to do. So to me, that's a need from a health reasons and environmental reasons, getting...
And I don't disagree with you. What I'm just saying is you have to sell it as that.
I don't think you have to.
Why are we paying a half-cent sales tax if we have to then pay money out of our budget as well for the lagoon? I thought the whole purpose of that half-cent sales tax was for us to not have to bear the burden of...
To dredge all of our canals would be like $8 million. So you're paying 130 for engineering.
And the county's going to pick up, we're asking them to pick up the rest, and that's coming from the sales tax project.
That's what Coco Beach did to engineering.
Right.
And Harbor's doing the engineering.
Only a small majority of our people live on canals, but I can guarantee you, I agree with him. Everybody in this community understands the dynamics of what's going on.
Well, I think you overstated that. I would say that's not true. I talk to a lot of people, even on my street, that have the same feelings about the sand that say, "I'm totally, just like you had people, I am totally against spending any money on sand on the beach. And I understand the part about the canal, and I understand the pay increase and we did that." But, you know, I get ridiculed all the time, is, "You're Satellite Beach, you save everything. You save the trees, you save bunnies, you save chickens, you save this, you save that."
We're cutting trees down.
And, but, and I'm going to say this again now, I'm okay with that part of the reputation that you want to have. But if you get to a point where you start raising people's taxes, it comes down to needs and wants, and you have to really frame, what I'm just saying is you need to communicate as what our needs, what our needs are. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not saying I'm against them or for them. I'm just saying you need to make sure you frame that's what you're saying. Just like Amendment One, it all depends on how you say that. Because why are we worried about Amendment One passing? What are the majority, as you said, what are the majority of people going to say? "I want 25,000 dollars so I can get a tax cut," right?
I just want to know, I want to...
That's what the majority of people are saying.
I would not get that homestead exemption.
Well, I agree. But you see what I'm saying is, the important part is you need to communicate really what you're trying to say.
See, this gets back to communication. We've got to be, we've got to be very good at transparent in how we get all this information out. Because the reality is, that $25,000 homestead exemption isn't going to even play out with anybody in Satellite Beach, but they don't know it yet.
Exactly what I'm saying.
So, you know, it's $600,000 hit to our city budget.
Absolutely.
You're not getting any benefit out of it. Why are you voting for it?
And I think you just hit the nail on the head. That's why I just say this from a tax increase. If you do a tax increase, that's the same thing that you need to be telling, you are not going to get, or this is what you will get with that tax increase. If you don't do it, this is how it's going to hurt you.
One of the things that, you know, the, any proposed tax increase would be specifically for maintenance across the city, upkeep and infrastructure, as well as replenishing the reserves after a dual hurricane in one year. That's literally the, that is why we're doing it.
And I think that's a good sell and a good...
Or why we would recommend it. The second, you know, issue with stormwater, we will be coming to you with a stormwater fee because we will not be able to address defluding that goes throughout the city without that.
And there's a good point, what are you on?
Everybody has two feet of water in their streets.
So when we talk about Jackson Avenue, that's a good point. Jackson Avenue, you'll hear more complaints, and I think we do hear more complaints, about the flooding of the street, and people can't drive on the street, and, you know, and I've heard that ever since I've been in office, about the flooding on Jackson Avenue. I've heard more about that than someone talking about, "Are we cleaning the water that comes off of Jackson Avenue and going into the canal?" Again, I know that's a hot topic, but really, what people are talking about is, "I'm driving through two feet of water on Jackson." So I personally, if I had to sell this, yes, we're going to raise stormwater fees, I'm going to say, "I'm going to raise them so I can help alleviate the flooding on Jackson." I don't really want to say anything, though, I'm using that to clean up stormwater from going into canal. I'm doing that to stop the flooding. That goes back to that communication. That's what I want to tell everybody.
But we are required by law...
I know what you're saying.
I mean, I think the environment's big, it's, we have to do that from the state. We have mandates from the state, correct? That we've got to meet. That is environmentally driven.
I think I understand it, but you know what? Every time we did those town halls, people that I talked to after, didn't really care about what the state mandated you to do as a city. They, I mean, you know, that doesn't mean anything...
They don't understand.
They don't, yeah, that doesn't mean anything to them when you say, "The state makes you do that." Okay, well, we all understand what an unfunded mandate is, right? We get that, that's perfectly clear for us. But for the average citizen, most people don't understand what that means. But if you say, "We have flooding on Jackson and people are running through two feet of water," you tell me one person who doesn't understand what that means. I can tell you from the water coming up my driveway up to my house, I can surely tell you what flooding on my street means to me. And if you say, "Steve Osmer, I want to raise your stormwater fee $50 a year to help alleviate the flooding on your street," I would say, "Sign me up, I'll do it tomorrow." I mean, because I would rather stop that flooding on my street. Or as you know, some people here whose houses sit much lower than that, and the water's coming in causing damage to their house.
The message is, Steve, we're going to stop the flooding on your street, and at the same time, we're going to clean it up before it gets into the river.
I'm all for that.
That's the message.
I agree with that.
All right, real quick, are you secure with this figure, $16?
Yes, $16.92.
We've been talking about that for 20, for $16 a night at Long Dogger's. I mean, you know, but, but I'm sorry.
I was just, no, I'm just saying, can we just do a double check, Brittany, is that true? I want to hear it from you.
We're good.
Okay. I'm good with it then.
I understand that.
I've been dealing with a lot of figures.
If she says that, I'm good with it.
But we're not, we're talking about, you know, one hamburger and a Coke to eliminate a giant problem that we're going to spend a ton of time on. We have to sell. At that, I'm willing to go out and sell it. If it was 300 and some dollars, I'm going to have a little bit more of a problem, because that's a pretty good hit.
Right.
But $16? I think I can go out in town hall meetings, show them this, show them the stormwater issues and stuff we have around, and the average logical person is probably going to look at you and accept it. I saw it last night in our council meeting. We had this place filled with people against the beach thing. You explained it to them, it diffused a lot of people because we sold the idea. So, you know, I'm a lot better at $16 than I am, Courtney, at 300. I just, my fear is, you know, we always do great at replacing cars, doing streets and all that. The unknown and the hardest part of this is that reserve funds that's sitting there that you really like to, you're just waiting for something to go bad to use it, a bad event. But unfortunately, if we don't figure that in, it's going to come back and bite us because we're not getting reimbursed in a timely enough manner.
I think if we're going to use comparisons, and we use your house as an example, and I know Crati always did his, but Crati also did a couple of other properties that, you know, different races, just to give people an idea that, you know...
Yeah, I'll just...
Let me just get by it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, you know, do it, I mean, but look at houses that are priced a little bit different, look at taxes, look at houses, you know, get a couple that are on the water just so that you can give people an idea of what they're really going to be looking at.
Here'sins would be $27.
Okay.
That's because he lives in a high-risk district.
I just wanted to point out that Police Chief has a...
Courtney, are you near done in your presentation?
Yeah, we are actually done. I just wanted to...
Let me open it up for, just to see if anybody in the audience, when you're ready.
But I did want to just make sure that, oh, real quick, I forgot to mention this. Since 2009 to 2017, we've added Roosevelt, Cassia, what else?
I'm sorry, what?
To the maintenance responsibilities of public works.
Oh, A1A.
A1A, we're adding A1A to them?
Cassia, Roosevelt.
Cassia, Roosevelt.
Um...
Think that's good now? Yeah?
Well, the Soto, you think it's...
We're going to add DeSoto Park.
Shell Street, Shell Street was...
And then Shell Street.
Add on...
So I just want to make sure that you all are aware that we're adding facilities, and we're trying to keep up with adding public works, but we're not even close to what we used to be in terms of, we had much more staff in the past.
And we're going to add the DeSoto stormwater fund, which is going to add a lot more...
Yes, so that, you'll see the stormwater plan come back to you with added staff for stormwater.
Courtney, if you don't mind, um...
Am I going backwards?
Can we?
I mean, I want to open it up and get some comments, come on when she's ready on it.
Before she's ready, can we use, can we use stormwater fund? I mean, if we have employees in public works that are doing stormwater stuff, can we use stormwater funds?
Yeah, we do.
All right, just...
It changed for about $100,000 to the general fund from the stormwater fund?
I think it's a little more than that, because especially this year, it's, it changes depending on how much work we do in the storm.
1:30 this year?
Yeah, it changes depending on how much work we do in the stormwater realm. This year, we've done a great deal of work in stormwater. So, you know, those hours will all be counted towards, you know, whatever transfer is made from the general fund to the stormwater, stormwater fund to the general fund.
Let me get some. Is there, it's a workshop, so I'll make a little, was there, anybody have comments from the public? I would still like you to come to the mic if you do. Please. All right, time's up.
My birthday is due.
I know. Happy birthday!
Birthday!
My age is 75, yeah. Some of you didn't think I was going to make it that long, did you? I just want to come out and say, when I left the last time, I turned to him, I told him, "Don't let you, let him go get away with your maintenance stuff, because it's going it's going to get you. So I want to support him in what he needed to do to maintenance. You got to tell people, we want these facilities, and we want to be able to enjoy this place, and we've got to be able to maintain them. Now, that's a hard, that's a hard thing to sell to some people, but you just got to make sure you're doing that. If you walk around and things are going trashy, and somebody's going to look at you, what have I spent my money on the fund for? I just want to back him up on that stuff. I, I, I'm sorry I'm late, I went out, my wife took me out to dinner.
And then you came to a meeting.
Then I came to a meeting. We're sitting there enjoying it, and she said, the waiter came by and said, he's got to go to a meeting. I said, oh, darn, I forgot I had to go to a meeting. So I, but I came anyway. So anyway, that, that's important to be able to do, and then write, you need to work on how you sell it, I hate to use that word, sell it, but, yeah, how you couch it, how you lay it out, and, and there's certain words, like John talked about, the mayor's slush fund one time, I said, no, no such thing. So you got to watch your words, how you, how you say that, and how your thought comes across.
Frank Stahl, weren't you the one?
Yeah.
I think you're right on that, because you listen to people on the streets, and infrastructure comes up, whether it's on the county end or anything, more times than not in conversations. It's amazing, you know...
Let me go up to one other point. You talked about people living on the canal, and I live, admit, I live on the canal. It's part of the drainage system, too. It floods through there, so that's, that's one of the things you need to consider, it's not, it, I'm looking, I don't own a boat, but the people that own a boat need, they have to do it, but it needs to be able to flow for that, that stormwater to come out of there. So that's, that's another reason to clean it up, along with the environmental thing, which I agree is the environmental thing, take advantage of what you can, because I think it may not be as long a living we think, but we hope it will be. We don't really, we don't want to live here a long time, and then part of that is how that stuff out there looks.
I can tell you something on the canals and cleaning them, just for reference, a particular canal in a neighboring city, the homeowners across where the canal was that was silted in rapidly, went to the city and said, we're going to file if you don't clean this canal up. And they won't, because the drainage onto that canal, eighty or ninety percent, it came from this side that held the canal with it. And it's in Indian Harbor Beach, and which is a cactus where it's canal. So, a little bit about it is, these drainages do contribute a lot to the flow into the sun in these canals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday!
So, okay, I'll close it. Courtney, sorry, just wanted to get some other input.
I have something on my mind, I was going to say, I can't remember.
Are you buying your husband heroin, the ticket?
Maybe. He's going to go snowboarding later this month. While I slave away at work.
Okay. Any other...
So from here, we go to...
The budget advisory committee.
Budget advisory committee, all of this gets presented.
We need to recommend a combination of all this stuff, so you don't really know, you know, and, and, you know, so we don't know what that'll end up with. So keep an open mind until then, but, you know, let's say we just don't have their input at all, clearly, you know what our recommendation is. That's staff.
I would like to say for a reference point, as we did tonight, when we talked about, you know, you do like your house and say, this is what the tax increase would be. But when we talk about the, the final recommendation, it's not just a tax increase. If, if by chance, we're going to do an increase of the water utility, for example, we're going to put a fee on it, and you're going to do waste management fee on that, and, and all of those things. And what I would say as a comparison, do your property, do my property, and don't do just the taxes.
Right.
But make sure we know what all of those things...
The full tax burden.
The full tax burden of any of those fees, utility, water, all those things that are going to do that. Because like I said, I'm with Frank, if I have to go and say $16, that may be nothing, but that may change to $85 or $100 when you add utility fee, wastewater, waste management, all of the other things. I'd just like to know the whole picture, I guess.
There's a lot of, a lot of the things that we're dealing with, too, that we need to make sure the community members understand, is we came out of a recession and we had to, to play catch-up. That was, that's basically what we've been doing for the past five years. But we're also having to deal with impacts of climate change, which is a huge deal. All those pipes into the ground, the, the age is exasperated by the pressure from the water table. And we have all of that information back from Stetson University, basically saying that, right in front of the fire station, they, they say, no wonder that sewer lines are popping over there, because they're, they're amazed that anything survives over there with the amount of pressure coming from all sides. So, you know, we have climate change, we have very aging buildings in, in many respects that need to be expanded. If you go to the fire department at any one given day and look at the office situation there with the two community paramedics and the administrative assistant cramped into one little tiny room, and how, and it's amazing how they don't kill each other by the end of the day. You know, the, the kitchen facilities for the fire department is too small for them to, to all be there. So it's stuff like that. They need to, they need to have a bigger facility. If we were at a floor, which is what we wanted to do, we can't do that there because of the location now, you know? So it's the, the things that are just piling on. So those are, you know, pressures that are all occurring to us at the same time, so this $600,000 impact to revenues isn't helping the matters at all in that respect, so...
And if we're going to be looking at the, the water fee, I think that needs to clearly be a separate thing that is explaining why we're doing that and what the money is going for, and it's clearly specifically for that purpose.
And we don't have to do that this coming year. You know, that can be done at a later time, because we, we would, we would only want to trigger that when we're ready to finance, and if that's something you want to do, that's when we would recommend triggering that increase.
That would be my recommendation. Don't trigger it all at once. If we need it, fine, but it's always kind of...
Yeah, ace in the hole.